All right. Good evening. I call to order our Monday, June 13 regular school board meeting. If you'd please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Board members, are there any changes, amendments, additions, or deletions superintendent to the agenda? Anybody has any? I am pulling 10.09 because of a conflict of interest for myself. Just so you guys know, it's our dual enrollment agreement with the University of Central Florida. That seems like, yeah. So we are on approval of the minutes. Superintendent?
Yes, and I just want to make note that item 9.01 has a revised HR personnel list, and you have a copy of that one in front of you. And with that, I recommend approval of the minutes from the school board workshop, May 16, 2022, executive session for collective bargaining, May 16, 2022, and the regular school board meeting, May 23, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do I vote on this since I wasn't a board member yet?
Yes. Do I still vote? Cool.
Good. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Good job. We don't have any representation this evening, that I understand, so we are on public input. We have quite a few cards this evening, so. We will start with Mrs. Cronin. Sorry to catch you off guard.
Good evening, board members, superintendent.
I didn't look that way to see if he was ready. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, superintendent. And I see we have a new attorney up here tonight, Mr. Myers, welcome. Just wanted to let you know that I will be leaving tomorrow for my yearly vacation. You all have my cell phone numbers. If you need to get in touch with me, you may do so. Also, I wanted to let you know that we look forward to bargaining by Zoom while I'm away, and hopefully we can get something worked out. Thank you.
Enjoy it. Shonda Davis?
Good evening. This is my first time doing this, but I felt it was something really important. I'm a mom, have four kids. The safety of our schools, I think that has to be a top agenda. I know it's not on the agenda, but I'm hoping we can have a town hall meeting or something. In 2018 and 19, we had 24 school shootings. As of so far, we're up to 27, and it's just, I don't see it get any better. I met with Mr. Mayberry and his team. I think they're doing an excellent job. I asked what us moms, we can do to help. Biggest thing, we need funding. We need more funding. We don't have no climb fences. I know that's a lot of money. But even at Mount Door High, I'm up there a lot. We have full light doors, meaning that they can just come in. That's our last line of defense. It's all glass. If you've not gone into our schools and seen how quickly somebody can get in, I encourage you to go. And I know that that's on the safety and security council, it's something they're looking at. The other thing I ask, what's the biggest thing we can do? Accountability of our teachers. We still have teachers not locking the door. I got my kids coming home, telling me, oh, Mr. So-and-so not locking the door. And I know we have a teacher shortage, so maybe if we're paying our teachers more, we're getting the best teachers we can. We can keep our kids safe, we can keep our teachers safe. And it just really has to be our top priority, because we can't have these events keep on happening. Uvalde and Parkland, it came down a lot to human error, and we can't have that happen in Lake County. So I hope you all take that information, and we can have a town hall meeting, get more parents in here, and see what we can do to help you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Sandy Brumley?
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. Just to go on what Ms. Davis said, I too have four kids here in Lake County. School safety is a very important issue. I know that the schools. I met with Mr. Mayberry and his team as well, and I know that they're doing a lot for the schools and trying to improve the security for ever, for all of it. Just whatever we can do as parents to, that we can help support you guys, support the schools to make it safer for our kids there. The door specifically at the high school is, it's an aluminum door frame. It's glass. I mean, it'd be so easy for anybody just to barge in there, tear it down. And then same thing, my kids come home from school. Teachers don't lock their doors. Students are opening doors, so there needs to be accountability for that, for all of those doors to be locked. So, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Roshina? I'm not going to try that. If you want to tell us when you get up here, would you please introduce ourselves, please? What was your name?
Roshna Monotovil.
Thank you for being here.
Did you know that a 14-year-old student's science fair project helped shape federal policy on social distancing to curtail the spread of COVID-19? Good evening, school board, parents, and citizens. My name is Roshna Monotovil, a recent Taveris High School graduate, attending the University of South Florida in the fall. I am here to talk about my experience with the science fair. This year, I took part in the Lake County Science and Engineering Fair, through which I won an opportunity to compete at the Orlando Science Fair, Florida State Science and Engineering Fair, and the International Science and Engineering Fair. Out of all the competitions throughout high school, the science fair has been the one that has taught me the most. I learned skills such as conducting a scientific investigation, writing a research paper, and reading scientific literature. Most importantly, I learned interpersonal skills such as communicating my findings in a way that is understandable to the public, advocating for my research and networking. This year's Florida State and Science and Engineering Fair was held in Lakeland for three days. I got to meet young researchers from all counties in Florida, and I got to present my findings to accomplished judges. The International Science and Engineering Fair was held in the Georgia World Congress Center in the bustling city of Atlanta. I met brilliant young scientists from over 75 countries, some of whom I still keep in touch with. Some highlights included the Pin Exchange Ceremony, speeches by Nobel laureates, a visit to the Georgia Aquarium, and internships by sponsors such as Regeneron Medicine. Exposure to the science fair has given me an early start on research. I plan on continuing research at college, and in the future, I hope to use, I hope to use research to critically evaluate new evidence and provide the best patient care as a doctor. It is more important than ever for the development of scientific literacy. The pandemic and vaccine misinformation has exacerbated our lack of scientific literacy. Our future, which includes our middle and high school students, should have exposure to the science fair to be able to analyze information and to be able to think for themselves. I believe that the skills developed by the science fair are invaluable for the growth of educated and well-rounded citizens. And adequate funding will only help them do that. As I mentioned in the beginning, the next big breakthrough could be by any high school or even middle school student. And it is, and it is competitions such as the science fair that provide a platform for our future scientists. I want to thank the Lake County School Board for such an incredible opportunity. I would also like to thank my mentor, science fair directors, and my parents. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. I have Sandra Scott and Liz. I think I have two people? Okay. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you. Good evening, superintendent and school board members. I am Sandra Scott, and this is Elizabeth Slaughter. We are here representing LCA, because Kathy and Elizabeth, along with several other educators, are attending FBA Summer Academy to receive professional development training. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss and review the student progression plan, so educator voices can be heard. LCA was able to assist in revision on language about student grades to focus the concerns on how we can help our students. LCA needs to be involved in any future committees or discussions where teaching and learning are impacted, because Lake County educators are innovators and experts. Another example in an area where educator voices can be evaluated is with the Professional Development Joint Committee. In the LCA contract, it states there would be a joint committee with LCA and Lake County school representatives to discuss professional development for the district. We look forward to collaborating for future professional development. Involving all stakeholders, input allows for the best outcomes for our students since teacher, working conditions, or student learning conditions. Thank you for understanding the importance of educator voices at the decision-making table. LCA and the Lake County School District should be working together to achieve our share of goals of having excellent public education for our students. Educator voices are essential to achieve these goals. We can collaborate to demonstrate to our educators they are valued and respected. When they feel appreciated and heard, they will stay. So let's work together to attract and retain the best educators for our students, and we look forward to helping our educators in Lake County School District and future committee. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you for coming and representing our LCA. Bob Johnson? Bob, I understand you have two cards on two different topics. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll just, I was going to say, we'll just hang out up here.
First of all, good afternoon, school board, Ms. Carnegie. Science fair first, very important. As evidenced by these young ladies here who went to international. Also, Florida usually, Florida, New York, and California usually are in the top three of the International Science Fair. I'm not quite sure where they ended up this year, but a lot of this in Florida, in Lake County, is due to Ms. Blackstone. I've worked with her quite a number of years. Ms. Blackstone went to see Yumitilla High School. Mr. Fraser looks very good that he's going to get involved with science fairs again. That's great, because you don't get to go to international and win the scholarships and so forth unless you get a good high school science fair. And the same thing with the, what was I going to say? Just lost my train of thought. But anyway, and Ms. Blackstone also went to see Ms. Pyatt, and she's working with us now to try to work out a program there. Volunteer is the best, because if you get, the middle school used to have 150 to 1200, and some of the projects weren't a good caliber, but if you get a volunteer, I think that you're going to have some, the top ones will do it, particularly if it's voluntary. So anyway, it's great. So we're making some progress in Yumitilla, and obviously at Taveris also. Second thing, maybe a bit little commercial, a little more controversial. I've been in agriculture all my life, I have various pesticide licenses. I also work with several schools, three in Yumitilla, sometimes Spring Creek, and also Round Lake years ago. And the ag program is good. You can't grow anything in Florida unless you use pesticides, particularly insects. That list there is the organic ones, and if you look at it, it says that there's a reentry period, which on most of them, when the spray dries, and the harvest interval, which on most of them is the next day. My feeling is that, I've worked a lot now with the middle school, and also, excuse me, the elementary school, and also Ms. Ballard, and they get insects, so you can't grow anything. So I wish you'd take a look at some of that, and they're all on the ORMI, which is the organic type pesticides. And most of them, there's no license required at all. And if they're sprayed when kids aren't there, which you should do, if you spray Friday afternoon, by Monday, most all these things are gone, dissipated. And Dipel is a biological insecticide that does a very good job on insects. So I wish, I don't know what the rule is in Lake County, but from looking at some of the plants, I don't think there's much spraying going on, which, I mean, you grow corn and cabbage, you're going to get lots of worms. So, and that'll give you a little more explanation of what you're dealing with on that sort of thing. So yes, you got to be careful, but you won't have an ag program unless you get some things, fungicides and insecticides out there. I know it's controversial, but what can I say? Thank you.
Thank you for being here and being such a science fair advocate. Kaitlyn. Kaitlyn Dunn.
Good evening. My name is Kaitlyn Dunn, and I have worked extremely hard to get into the International Science Fair. I've been working in the science fair for about three years, and I worked very hard and ended up getting a full ride scholarship to Florida Institute of Technology of a value of $250,000 for outstanding research. My research was on creating a tissue transplant using organic materials such as spinach leaves to take away the need for organ transplants taken out of someone as a donor. So I would like to talk that the International Science Fair is extremely important, and it is the most prestigious science and technology competition that you could ever take place in as a student. One of the best, all of the best minds, like Einstein and Theodore Roosevelt of all, came from the Regeneron International Science Center or Science Fair. You can win up to $8 million in prizes for all of the students who are competing against each other for the science fair. I would just like to say that it is extremely competitive. There is actually, I would like to say that Lake County does not usually take part in the International Science Fair. Me and Roshna have been from Lake County, from Taveris High School, and we have both gotten into the International Science Fair from just our one school, and both of us are completely voluntarily doing the science projects on top of all of our seven AP classes. So it is a lot of work, and it's really difficult to find a project to do based on the funding that you are confined to, which is nothing. It was literally my AP teacher's $100 that she gets for AP test scores off of environmental science. So that is a very small budget. So we actually got in trouble for using the budget a little bit too much, but we don't talk about that. But anyways, me and Roshna have been able to do, we have been able to do pretty much the impossible. We have worked in a closet, not a laboratory. I mean, it was a level-one lab, but you just need a closet for that. And we have won lots of money, and we have always placed in everything that we've done. So going against people who are from Brevard County and highly funded and work with colleges. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you for being here. It might be advantageous, too, to make some contacts from your contacts and maybe see some ways that we can enrich that as well. So thank you both for being here. We're very proud of you, and we wish you both the best of luck in your future endeavors, so. Our last card is Banks-Helfrich. I can't, it was quickly written, I know that. So you'll introduce yourself when you get up here, I'm sure. Thank you, Banks.
Banks-Helfrich, 9100 Sands Lake Road. Superintendent, board, newly board member. I am Lake Soil Water Conservation District, seat one slash chairperson. Big title, meaning there's five of us that are elected in the county, and we actually have one of the largest budgets in the state of Florida as far as a district is concerned. $1.3 million over a three-year span. And we are geared towards education. We have what's called a mobile irrigation lab. Two, we have four technicians, two go out at a time. They measure the water pressure for mainly agriculture, and then we evaluate it, and we give them a scorecard. And it is purely educational to save water, to conserve water. We have given away a scholarship, a $1,000 scholarship every year. This year, I think it was a Lake Minial High School student that won it. We gave away 534 trees at the Taveris, City of Taveris Arbor Day Celebration in January. We gave away 100 lemon plants, lemon grass plants through a natural farm. We are getting ready to add another contract to our, our board through FDAX Florida Department of Agriculture. What does this all mean? This all means that we are an educational branch, very similar to what you all, in a very smaller sense, mainly in the education of agriculture and water and soil conservation. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right, that's the end of public input. So we are on our reports. I think we see Carmen Colan Bat here from the Education Foundation.
Chairman, board, welcome Tyler Brandenburg. Welcome to our new attorney, Mr. Myers. And thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of the Education Foundation. Apple Mart ended up with a total of 1,078 teacher visits, which was just slightly, maybe 20 under the year before. But with the price of things, it looks like we distributed over 100,000 this year. And the stores will be opened back on August 3 for our teachers. In partnership with the Salvation Army, we have purchased 2,500 backpacks and grade-appropriate school supplies. And we are going to be stuffing the backpacks on July 14, and they'll be delivered based on FTE to our elementary schools. Red for Ed, the community-wide school collection drive kicks off July 1 and runs through July 31. With the supply weigh-in at Wooton Park on August 1, we normally receive over four tons of supplies, and these supplies are distributed to our Apple Mart stores during the year. Donors can also buy items online on our website, and they're shipped directly to us. And in conjunction with the event, Call Your Financial is doing the Shred for Ed program. We've secured permission to set up in the district office on Saturday, July 16 in the parking lot with the shredding truck, and anyone that brings school supplies can shred for free that day. We were notifying, this was very exciting news, that Disney is opening up a granting cycle again. We haven't gotten a grant from Disney in about three years. So we'll be working with the district to determine where those funds, they're fairly large grants, so where those funds will have the most impact and get that grant applied for. The board has voted to fund four, what we call, impact projects this past month, totaling right at $150,000. We have purchased science lab equipment for all middle and high schools. The construction open-air classroom at South Lake High School will be funded. We're funding VPK equipment for eight schools and books. And then the Promotional Enterprise Entrepreneur Program at Taveris High School was funded. We held our career speed dating event for tech stock and children's students this past week, and we had nine different companies come in and present career opportunities to 24 of our students. Stepping out for education is July 29 and 30 at Mission Inn. Our presenting sponsors, Electric Services Inc., Kurtz Air Condition, and Style Magazine, are hosting our own Lori Myers, who is an AP at Sorento, Jamie Bach, who owns Jamie and Company Real Estate, Shawna Purdy, who owns Kurtz, David Hilton with the law offices of Pamela Hilton, Tyrell Rachel, who is a fitness trainer for Xfinity, and Jimmy Adams from ESI, have been diligently working with their pro partners, and they're planning to come out and perform for us. We have nine tables left for Friday night. We have 12 seats left for Saturday night. So if you haven't gotten your Saturday night ticket, you might want to call me on the way home. Our exact meeting is Wednesday, and the next board meeting is June 22 at noon in the district office. Do we have any questions?
Thank you very much. It sounds exciting.
Thank you.
Perfect. Do you have anything?
I do. First of all, I'm not Steve Johnson. So I was going to give you all an update on.
Is your mic on, Mr. Myers? Green button?
There we go.
All right, perfect, thank you.
I was going to give you an update as far as what the transitions look like so far. So it's been about two and a half, three weeks. We've been given 33 contracts to review. We've turned over 24 of those already. I hope to get through the remaining nine that are pending by the end of the week. I'm also working with Ms. Randall on several real estate matters so far that are progressing. And then Mr. Johnson did ask me to remind you all about the superintendent evaluation forms. If you can get those back to Valerie and him as soon as you can. They like to get that on the 27th agenda, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you for the update as well. All right, we are on our consent agenda. Superintendent?
I recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 10.08 and 10.10 to 10.13.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, thank you. We can start with 10.09. And I spoke with Mr. Johnson, just so you guys know, I have the form. I'll be filling out the AB form, that's the recusal from voting, and it was just to be on the safe side, so he was erring on the side of caution in regards to that. So I won't be participating in that vote.
All right. I recommend approval of item 10.09, the Dual Enrollment Articulation Agreement with Lake County Schools and the University of Central Florida.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Okay, so we are on 11.01, which is a public hearing, Mr. Myers?
Yep, item 11.01 is a public hearing regarding tentative approval of the 2022-2023 Code of Student Conduct and Policy Guide. If there are anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak to this item, come to the podium at this time. And seeing no one coming forward, I feel appropriate to close the public hearing.
All right, thank you, sir. Superintendent?
Recommend approval of item 11.01, tentative approval of the 2223 Code of Student Conduct and Policy Guide.
So moved.
Second.
So discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Myers, 11.02?
Yep, item 11.02 is a public hearing regarding tentative approval of the 2022-2023 Student Progression Plan. Again, if there's anyone in the public who wants to come forward to speak to this item, please come to the podium at this time. Seeing no one come forward, I feel appropriate to close the public hearing.
Great, thank you. Superintendent?
Recommend approval of 11.02, tentative approval of the 2223 Student Progression Plan.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, Mr. Myers?
On to item 11.03, is a public hearing regarding tentative approval of the following policies. Policy 2120, School Improvement; 2215, Program of Instruction; 2417, Comprehensive Health and Education; 5410.01, Promotion, Acceleration, Placement, and Retention; 5500, Student Conduct; 5512, Smoking and Tobacco Nicotine-Free Environment; 5630.01, Seclusion and Restrain of Students with Disabilities; 5724, Preparation of Voter Registration; and 8800, Religious Patriotic Ceremonies and Observances. If there's anyone in the public who would like to speak to any of these items at this time, please come to the podium. And again, seeing none, I feel appropriate to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Superintendent?
Recommend approval of 11.03, tentative approval of the policies as stated by Mr. Myers.
Board?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, thank you. All right, superintendent?
So you approved tonight, item 10.08, is a Dual Enrollment Articulation Agreement between the school district and Beacon College. And I've asked Ms. Ellis to come forward and just give you some highlights of this articulation agreement. It is amazing for our kids, and I want to thank her for her leadership and the collaboration with our department, her department, and Beacon College. So tell us a little bit more about this agreement.
Yeah, so I've worked very closely with Beacon College and Melissa Leifert, our ESE director, and this is maybe one of the things I'm most proud of so far that we've done here. And we've done a lot of really amazing things in Lake County. But as you know, our mission of Lake County is to provide every student with individual opportunities to excel. And I think the idea of a dual enrollment agreement with Beacon College so that our students with disabilities have that opportunity for acceleration and for dual enrollment credit out of high school is a huge step towards making sure that every, truly every student has an opportunity. So this agreement actually works with 11th and 12th grade students. The idea is that 11th grade students will take a high school credit-earning course that has been designed partially by Beacon College in order to get them ready for what college actually is. So think of like the SLS courses that we have with Lake Sumter. So this would be a Beacon version of a high school credit-earning college course, or a high school credit-earning course in 11th grade, which will be a prereq for those students to then be able to take on our campuses, our credentialed teachers, dual enrollment credits with Beacon College at our schools. So it's just a very exciting opportunity. I wanted to make sure that it didn't just like go by on consent and that we highlighted the idea that we are really, truly trying to provide for all students.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. And for your vision on that as well, it's very innovative.
But that's just one example of some really great things happening. We had a chance today to kick off our summer leadership training, and so we welcome those who are able to come. We had Mr. Brandenburg and Ms. Cunningham were there this morning. Mr. Dodd was here this afternoon, and so we have two more days, so we welcome everybody to come out. But I had a chance to kick it off, we're just highlighting some of the things that we're most proud of. We could certainly add this to the list of things that, because there's so many things. I could have gone on for hours, but limiting it to a few things was kind of challenging. But it's a great time of reflection and just really to say thank you, how grateful we are for everyone and for the role that they play here to serve the students. So thank you, Ms. Ellis, for that, and for everyone for the great job they're doing. We did send out two letters of condolence, one to many more. She is the administrative assistant in the assistant superintendent's office for business services, as she lost her father, Donald Pertuset. And then we had a retired teacher, Ronald Timson. He was at Taveris High School, who passed away, and we sent condolences to his family. So I do just want to say thank you to Kaitlyn and Roshna, who were here today. I know you probably all want to highlight those amazing students, but, and also Ms. Blackstone, who's been working really hard to help bring back and grow our science fair. It was, you know, the pandemic kind of hit that area as well, and so we're kind of getting back up to speed as we are in so many areas, just getting back to hopefully some more.
And so we're kinda getting back up to speed as we are in so many areas, just getting back to hopefully some more normalcy. And that's what, she's just really invested in growing that, as evidenced by the fact that she's going out and meeting with principals and providing that support to get our teachers back working on science fair, and our kids back on science fair. So thank you for that. That's awesome. Thank you, Superintendent.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Brandenburg?
I'll make it brief. Just wanted to thank countless people for helping me out this first week, getting up to speed. Natalie and Patty and the admin office have been fantastic, getting me through all the paperwork. Dwayne, Phillip, and Sonya in IT got me up with my laptop and computer and email and all that fun stuff, and got a tour of the IT department today, more Chromebooks than I could ever imagine. But they've got that down to a science, so that was really cool to see. And they got to attend summer leadership this morning. Thanks again to the superintendent, Dr. Felton, and Amy for a great morning, and looking forward to all the good things ahead. So just thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. I didn't get to welcome you properly last Monday, so it's good to have you. Ms. Cunningham?
Well, I'd like, first of all, say welcome to Mr. Brandenburg and also to Attorney Myers. I really appreciate the reach-out on Friday afternoon. I think that's a great step in communication and in the right direction. I'm really looking forward to working with you. I would also like to add my thanks and gratitude to Mrs. Sellis. As a person who spent a lot of her life in ESC, I am extremely appreciative to you for that. I think that's gonna be good for all students, not just for the ones that get to take part in that program. And I also wanna share that the superintendent and I were at the School Board Association Conference last week. Learned a lot of really good things, but the thing that I wanna share with you is, I went to a session that was mainly focused on school board members trying to give ideas to other school board members about working on those common problems that we have, like not being able to find personnel and student achievement and security and all that good stuff. And I can tell you, I was extremely proud to be from Lake County, because just about every option that they brought up, we already do it, or we know about it. So I was extremely happy and pleased to be able to share when it was my turn and say, well, we kinda already do that. There's nothing like feeling like, okay, we got it. There was one thing that I saw that I do like, and I would like to make a request, that we look at how much it actually costs, and the superintendent is aware of this because she and I shared it. But there is a device that faculty members can wear, where they can press. I'd really like to know the cost of that and if it truly is prohibitive, because I've heard some really good things about it, and I did talk to the representative. So I'll speak to our security people a little more in detail and give them the handout that I received. And hopefully, we can look at that. And that's all.
For representing us there, both of you.
Yes, so Commissioner Parks and I had our somewhat periodic, frequent coffee and conversations. I'm not sure which timeframe to stick on that. We're really kinda kicking it back off now, coming out of the pandemic. And it was very, very well-attended, so thank you to every public who came out. One meeting that really gave me a little smile was the new president from Lake Sumter was there, and she spoke very highly of the collaborative relationship she's got going on with UC superintendent. That's absolutely incredible, and I love to see us collaborate and be great partners with post-secondary learning here in our own community. So that's, big praise for that one. And also, big thanks for looking into the summer food distribution. This was an item I brought up at the end of our last meeting, to discover that a couple of things prohibit the means of distributing the meals as we had the last couple of summers. One, the grant is expiring, and two, the shortage of being able to get these meals just with supply and demand availability. But one item that did kinda come up as a question is, how can we afford such a thing? Because we're funded so poorly, we can be rest assured that this is actually covered through the USDA. They pay for it, we don't. So no worries on that one. And, Mr. Myers, welcome to you. Thank you for the call on Friday. Whenever you see attorney calling you, you're like, uh-oh, now what? But it was very refreshing for it to be a, hey, going to Monday's meeting, what does that look like? Any questions, comments, that sort of thing? And I think that it just ran very smoothly, so I appreciate that reach-out. And I also appreciate now seeing the summary of all the contracts that were outstanding, because some of them do go back pretty far on that list. And so thank you to you and your team for working, I'm sure tirelessly, to be able to give so many of them back to us. So thank you for that. And, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dodd. I spoke with Natalie just in regards to the committees, now that you're our appointed school board member. And I know I briefly spoke with you before the meeting, but just to get the Board on speed, we went through Dr. Burns' committees. And there's, there is a committee, the second committee, or the second committee down on the first page, that will meet in October. And Mr. Brandenburg said that he is fine serving in that capacity for now, as long as the Board, unless somebody else wants it, right? And then there was another one, the Wellness Committee. It's on the second page, the second one down. It says, may not, may not, they may meet in late fall, they're just not quite sure. So he agreed to facilitate that. In regards to the rest of them, there wasn't a meeting on the horizon before the November election. And then the Calendar Committee typically doesn't meet until later in the year as well, so we'll wait for an appointment on that. We just wanted to bring everybody up to speed, and thank you for being willing to serve on those committees as well. We're like drinking from a fire hose, right? Good. All right, thank you. I also wanted to mention, you guys, I really thought this year that we would be representing two teams, two softball teams as state champions, and as it serves, we have none. I did wanna highlight Southlake High School, so you should know that Jensen and I sat up on game, on the high school Florida, high school sports network, and watched that game, and it was phenomenal. And so if anybody didn't have the opportunity to see it, the pitcher at Southlake pitched a one-hitter. They had no hits except one, and it was a homerun. So they won, they won. The other team won 1 to 0. Southlake had multiple hits. Their defense was amazing. They really put on a spectacular show. And I know that that wasn't the way they wanted to end their season, but to be able to say, we made it to the state championship game where the runners-up was just so deserving and very well. Just a great season. We're gonna see amazing things from them and from UCIS next year. So hopefully, we'll be able to have two teams represented as state champions again. So I didn't get to say that last time. Thank you guys for letting me attend via Zoom with the situation that we had last week. And with that, meeting adjourned. I have two things.